Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll pass out reminder cards for everyone that's packing our council chambers tonight that you're invited back for our budget meetings. We have, I think, 27 of those. Is that right, Steve?
Twenty-eight this year, if you'd like.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. So, next up is public comment. This is for public comment, not on anything that's agendized. We'll still have public comment on those agenda items, but if anyone would like to address the council on an item that is not agendized, you're welcome to speak now, and you'll have a total of three minutes each, up to three minutes. We'll be keeping a timer just to make sure that we can all get a chance to speak, so welcome.
Hi. Lloyd Penrod, 2910 Lincoln. It'll be about a minute. Hello, Mayor, council members. I'd like to bring to your attention an issue regarding the restroom at Yountville Community Park at the corner of Lincoln and Monroe. Rumor has it that when those bathrooms were built, they were equipped with automatic doors, door locks, which locked when the park was closed. Don't know what happened to those, but it might need to be revisited. There's so much activity at that restroom at night, especially with the additional lighting, that it's disturbing to the residents living in the area. People stopping there often have no realization that residents are sleeping within earshot. I don't know of any reason why the restrooms are available all night when the park is closed. Creates an opportunity for traffic, misuse, inappropriate behavior in a quiet residential area. I ask you to please consider researching some sort of electronic device that will be able to lock the doors when the park is closed at a reasonable time such as 10:30. And then the soon-to-be-redone bathroom at the north end of the park could be set up the same way with perhaps a later locking time to accommodate and possibly encourage limo and bus drivers to park there near the cemetery and away from residents. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And for folks that aren't as familiar with our process, we're not allowed to comment on items brought up in public comment because they're not agendized, but you'll notice the staff takes notes of anything that's brought up, so we're not ignoring the comments. Anyone else have anything at this point?
I guess we'll save you and make it three minutes total. How's that?
Even better. If you can just bring that closer, if everyone's speaking, just make sure that's near you. Okay?
Okay. My name is Dee Hyzer. I'm with some of my neighbors. We all live in this fabulous town of Yountville. We would like to start a dialogue about rental stabilization in our senior parks in Yountville. Not all of the neighborhoods, just addressing the senior parks. We aren't asking for rental caps. We understand there's cost of living that, heights that need to be raised and necessary for cost of living increases, et cetera. We're concerned about stabilizing our rents, so we were able to remain living in our wonderful town. We're getting a lot of conflicting information, so we were asking for guidance. I don't know if the town council is the place to do that, of what are facts. One big concern is rental space vacancy. Our parks are privately owned, so are they governed by the ordinances that are in place, by the state mandated ordinances? People say that we are protected by AB 1482 that is about to be passed. The way that I read it, it states that mobile homes and manufactured prefab homes are not covered by that statute. Our whole town is a unique, multi-generational community, and seniors bring a lot of expertise, a lot of experience, a lot of valued time, and not to mention volunteerism, to the town. I'd really like to see it stay that way. I'd like the seniors to be able to remain living here. I think we all would. And another issue is rental vacancy. So when some of these homes are vacated, the rent space is arbitrarily increased at some magic number, sometimes a couple hundred per month increase, which makes the base higher for all the next people come in. If that keeps going, eventually the seniors even won't be able to live here. So again, in researching, we've been referred to many documents relevant to town laws that hold mobile and manufactured homes under mandated laws, and we're told that we are safe and not to worry, such as Civil Code 789 and the state guidelines for mobile homes. However, when we research, we discover that the communities in our area have had to adjust those laws, even in our neighboring towns such as Calistoga. They had to fight to rewrite their ordinances so the manufactured homes, all those parks in there, were under rent stabilization, and they were successful. I haven't had time to research how that went and how they went about doing it, but I certainly will. So we're just asking for guidance if this is the place for that, and we appreciate your time and look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. And Steve, if you want to just maybe suggest the best way to reach back out to staff or to our attorney to get some feedback?
It's not as easy a question to answer, so the first thing that I would suggest is that there is a group of you. I would try to meet with you. Rent control is a, or rent stabilization takes many, many different means, and it would require legislative action and/or a voter referendum initiative. And we can also review what your concerns and issues are or aren't, but there's a lot of legal expense that typically also rent control leads to additional costs. The residents have to pay for the administration of rent control in most cases, as well as the park. So probably better to have an exploratory conversation and see what your issues are or aren't, and to the extent how they can be addressed.
Okay. Will do.
It might make the most sense if there is a time when Gary is available, like on the Tuesday before a meeting, or at least by phone, so that he could provide some of that legal support.
We can probably set that up for an afternoon or morning of a council meeting.
Okay.
That'd be wonderful. Can I ask you, is it possible to ask you, as far as you know, are the mobile homes, manufactured homes, prefab, whatever they're labeled, are they governed under state laws for stabilization?
I'm not going to comment on that because the new law is currently being reviewed. I think it's reasonable to interpret that, what you did, but there's a number of, there are a number of laws in place that do govern specifically mobile home rent control, and what I would also share with you is a lot of the governance related to mobile homes don't fall under the jurisdiction of the town. They fall under state and more specifically, housing and community development. So there's a narrow range in terms of what's directly applicable at the local city-town level versus the broader.
And we'll make sure that staff gives you that information, links to whatever websites that the state has about mobile home, the specific mobile home act that does, oh, is that your phone?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
B, that's your phone? I just want to make this clear. Now you've gone over your time.
That was letting you know.
Yeah, really. Somebody's lost.
You put yourself on an alarm, is what you did. But we'll be able to provide some of that additional information that you could research, and Gary and Steve will be available to you to talk a little more about what details we do know.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And please silence all your phones. Anyone else like to speak on an item not on our agenda tonight? Okay, seeing no one else coming forward, we have a consent calendar with items 6A through D. If there are no questions, is there an action to adopt the consent calendar as submitted?
So moved. I don't want to hit the button this time. I'm going to hit the button myself.
We're going to try to do this electronically. Oh, there is a motion. Is there a second?
A second. There. I can't. It's still motion, but...
Okay, we'll just... So now, please vote.
Aye. It's not popular.
There we go. Consent calendar passes unanimously. Next up, we have a presentation from a group of our residents requesting consideration of a gas engine leaf blower ban. I see you've taken over the front row, so in whatever order or together, please come forward.
I just need to see if I can remember how to use this.
Joe is ready to help if necessary.
Oh, thanks, Michelle.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to work on... There you go. Sorry about that.
Oops, we need to go back one. Okay.
I know. Doing so far so good. Good evening, Mayor Dunbar and council members. I'm Janet Claire Gott, and I live on Vista Drive here in town. And we're a group of residents who've joined together to petition our town to adopt an ordinance to phase out gas-powered leaf blowers, and we will be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have at the end of the presentation. Doyleen Marchbanks presented this idea to us about a year ago. It's been a long time, and we all heartily joined her to propose this eventual ban for our town. Two of us served on the town's former Recycling and Resource Conservation Committee, and two of us served on the Green Team, and Doyleen initiated the town's current events discussion group that you can go through the Golden Ticket program, and we all care No one enjoys the daily cacophony, we all have witnessed this, of leaf blowers as you're trying to enjoy a beautiful day here in Yountville. Residents, tourists, schoolchildren, pets, birds and bees, and all wildlife are affected by the noise and the smell of gas-powered leaf blowers. Most of us have also experienced the nearly 100 decibel noise levels, the flying dust, the debris and allergens, as well as that noxious smell from the leaf blowers. They can reach speeds of over 100 miles per hour. They are more powerful than Hurricane Dorian was. When they're going, they can remove topsoil, mulch, beneficial bugs like honeybees and ladybugs and butterflies. Noise, health, environmental, and business issues are the reasons that we're asking for this ban on combustion and gas-powered leaf blowers. In doing so, Yountville would join more than 24 California cities. Carmel banned gas-powered, actually all leaf blowers, two years after they were invented in the mid-'70s. Also, there are at least 100 cities nationwide that have bans, and Del Mar, Encinitas, Carmel, as I said, Berkeley, Beverly Hills, Laguna Beach, Lot 24 here in California, as well as Aspen, Palm Beach, Portland, Seattle, and many more cities and towns. Edmunds Automotive found that two-stroke engine commercial blowers produce as much hydrocarbons in 30 minutes as an F-150 truck does driving nearly 4,000 miles, and it emits nearly 300 times the hydrocarbons of that pickup and 93 times that of a sedan. Leaf blowers, however, deposit all that in your backyard over that half hour instead of over this nearly 4,000 miles traveled. The California Air Resources Board says that gas leaf blowers will become the leading source of ozone-forming emissions in our state by 2020, surpassing cars. And then the World Health Organization said that gas leaf blower exhaust contains four of the top 10 carcinogens. So, gas-powered leaf blowers, are they worth it? In the Bay Area alone, blowers produce 1.4 tons a day of smog compounds and 15 tons of carbon monoxide. I've told you a little bit about the environmental effects. We hope that you'll feel compelled to join other forward-thinking cities and towns and call for a phase-out, followed by a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers in our little town. And next, I'm going to introduce Doyleen Marchbanks, who's going to talk a little bit about noise pollution and air pollution.
If you could lower that microphone for us, please. Thank you very much.
Doyleen Marchbanks. I live on Jasmine Street in Washington Park. I'm here to talk about the noise and health issues of gas-powered leaf blowers. Let's start with the noise pollution and its consequences. Sacramento City Code states, "Every person in the city is entitled to live in an environment free from excessive, unnecessary, or offensive noise levels." We believe the same. I went forward. Do I go back?
Do you want to go to that one?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to be supplementing what you're reading on the board. Regarding the decibel levels in general, sounds above 85 decibels are harmful and can cause hearing loss. The decibel noise range varies as to the proximity of the blower. When noise levels exceed the recommended levels, the noise pollution contributes to stress disorders such as anxiety, depression, hypertension, and high blood pressure. The body reacts with increased adrenaline, changes in the heart rate, and elevated blood pressure. Acoustics experts say blower noise is especially irritating because of its particular pitch, the changing amplitude, and lack of control by the hearer. Regarding the two-stroke engine, everyone knows the acute effects of carbon monoxide, but the other gases are equally worrisome. Both nitrous oxides and hydrocarbons contribute to smog formation. Hydrocarbons can be carcinogenic, and nitrous oxides can cause acid rain. On the bottom paragraph there, I wanted to reiterate the two-stroke engine emitted nearly 299 times the hydrocarbons of a pickup and 93 times the hydrocarbons of a sedan. Thank you. The takeaway is that if you fret about the air pollution coming out of your car's tailpipe, you should avoid gas-powered leaf blowers. I noted the Saratoga ordinance only because it went into effect today, October 1st, 2019. As a side note, if you are a TED Talk follower, as I am, you might want to listen to the TED Talks on why noise is bad for your health. Yeah. Yeah, I need the bullet points, please. The next one. Is it the next one? Yeah. I've talked about noise pollution. Now I'd like to talk about the health effects of air pollution due to leaf blowers. This is really why I began working on this issue. The California Air Resources Board says, "Air pollution costs our state billions of dollars annually in healthcare, crop, and building damage. Logically, we must assume that anything on the ground in small enough particles to become airborne will end up in the dust clouds created by leaf blowers and then inhaled by anyone in the area. Fine particles, which are man-made and do not occur in nature, evade the body's defense system. According to the EPA and California Air Resources Board, they can increase the number and severity of asthma, cause or aggravate bronchitis or other lung diseases, and reduce our ability to fight infections. Regarding molds and pollens, these substances are known irritants to sufferers of asthma or allergies. According to the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America, 1.8 million Californians, including half a million children, suffer from asthma, and 600 of those die of it each year." We can go to... Now I need my bullets. Regarding pesticides, of the most commonly-used herbicides, some are cancer-causing, cause birth defects, have reproductive effects, are neurotoxic, damaging to the kidney and liver, and are irritants, according to the Executive Director of the National Coalition Against the Misuse of Pesticides. Did you know the use of pesticides on home lawns is four times as heavy per acre as in agriculture, thus increasing the hazard to lawn care operators? According to the founders of the Bio-Intergal Resource Center, inhalation of pesticides is the most destructive form of ingestion. In addition, the debris blown off yards clog storm drains and pollute waterways. I believe the best answer to this air pollution problem is to use an electric or battery-operated blower vacuum. The vacuumed material could then be used as mulch or simply disposed of in our green bins. Let's consider science and evidence-based information and do what's best for our beautiful Thank you for your time and consideration. Next, Penny will talk about the businesses in Yountville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. Penny Proto, Yountville Crossroad. So we've collected many signatures from our neighbors and residents of Yountville in support of banning the gas-powered leaf blowers, but we also have the support of valued businesses in our town as well, such as the French Laundry Group and the Bardessona Hotel and Restaurant. Known for their exceptional food and service, they are also on the cutting edge of caring for the environment. They understand that a healthy environment is good for all of us. Through their policies and construction methods and landscape planning, they have illustrated this. To their effort, they have adopted battery-powered leaf blowers that are effective, they have a lower decibel level, and no polluting engine to power them. The battery-operated garden tools are also easier on the staff. They weigh less, and they're quieter. These businesses are also considerate as to when and where they use them. All of Yountville, all of this makes Yountville a more welcoming place to live in and to visit. Now I'd like to introduce Sheri Brightington.
Close enough? Close enough? She'll do the correct name.
We go by first names around here, anyway, so...
Yeah, I'm Sheri Brightigam. I live on Yount Street in Yountville, and thank you for hearing us this evening. In closing, our group's goal is to have eco-friendly landscape service and to strike a balance between unfettered leaf blower operation and a more sane approach. We're here this evening seeking the support and assistance of the council for a smooth transition from gas-powered to electric battery, hopefully vacuum, leaf blowers. We've presented the health risks to you, and we're looking to you, the council, for implementation. We've wondered about a rebate program, reimbursements, a grace period to usher in a gas-powered ban, and an outreach to help residents and landscapers know how to comply. We are not looking to reduce productivity. We are not looking to create roadblocks. We're looking for open conversations. As we've met for a year, we've realized this may upset a few people, but we believe it's for the greater good. This is a self-created problem by the leaf blower industry. While I was collecting signatures, a couple of people stood out to me, surprised me. They said, "You know, why are you even bothering with something so small? The glaciers are melting, the Amazon's on fire, the ocean's full of plastic. I don't want to even think about this. This is too small." And it really got me thinking that seemingly small actions can affect the world in a big way. Banning gas-powered leaf blowers is one small step towards protecting the environment as well as our health. And at this time, we'd like to submit to the council petitions with over 200 signatures. They're from, all from Yountville citizens, supporting the ban. We'd also like to thank Debbie Wellborn, who heard about us and saw us gathering signatures and took a couple of petitions, so thank you, Debbie, for your help. And we'd also like to thank our many neighbors and the citizens of Yountville who have supported our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I'm not sure to whom we should direct questions, if you want to divide it up, if there are any questions from the council. What I would also disclose is that we met, you invited me to have this conversation, it was a couple months ago, I think, or so. I believe you met with some other council members also independently. We haven't been able to discuss this, so I don't know to whom you talked or what you shared, but what I will say is, thank you for all the research that you have done. As one of the things that I was strongly recommending is that you explain the situation and also bring some solutions potentially to the council to hear and consider. I see we already saw an impact of non-leaf blowing cleanup by Councilmember Durham in one of your slides.
We need to ban that outfit.
Yeah, we might need to ban the outfit, though.
At least I had my shirt on.
So, I would just, Gary, I don't know if you are familiar with any of the existing ordinance language, or if you could maybe just explain what the steps would be for the council to consider about taking any kind of action as being requested.
Yeah, sure. So, there are several cities, as was pointed out in the state of California, that have banned either gas-powered, electric, or all of them. Some of them even go even further than just the gas-powered. State law is silent on this issue, so local jurisdictions like the town can decide how far to go, how to regulate them, what sort of penalties to impose, whether or not there's a grace period and the like. So this is all in line with the town's authority to do so. We have drafted similar ordinances for other jurisdictions that have focused on a slightly broader ban than this, but also addressing this exact issue, so I'm familiar with it.
Great. Steve, did you have any thoughts about process?
I think the process that I would encourage consideration if the council's interested is that staff would work on drafting a framework, and in all candor, our citizens group has met with town staff, identified, we've done some research. We think we can probably put together a working draft, and my thought would be that we would meet with, Gary and I could draft it, and then maybe we could have a meeting with the resident group, and then if the council's, and then we meet with them and bring it back for probably November 19th, realistically, if that is something the council would want, possibly December 3rd.
Okay. Comments from the council? Anyone like to share? Yes, Councilmember Dornbecker?
I just happen to have a copy of our climate action plan. Two members of our Go Green team are on this committee, too, and on page 44, it has, "Consider adopting an ordinance to ban or regulate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers as technology advancements make alternatives more attractive. At a minimum, encourage the use of electric and battery-operated leaf blowers." So we have been talking about this for a long time. I'm ready. I'm ready.
Councilmember Durham?
Confirm, you're opening it up to public comment, and then we'll come back to...
Yes, this is in response to the presentation first, and then any other comments or questions of the presenters? So...
I'll go ahead and invite anyone else in the audience that would like to comment
on this, if you would. You're welcome to. Yes.
Pam Reeves, 6887 Jefferson Street. I wasn't a member of this group, but I wholeheartedly support their position and their recommendation to do this for the town and for the environment in general. We, as a species, have allowed too much time to pass before addressing all of these issues that make our climate out of control. And one small step, as was mentioned before, can be an education moment and a move towards just a natural progression away from gas-powered everything's. So I really would support and ask the council to be positive with this and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have a resolution yet to pass, but we're talking about creating one, so, yes. Vice Mayor, question?
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Proto. Just generally, how did the businesses respond, and what was kind of their journey on going from gas-powered to where they are?
I spoke to both the head gardener, Erin Kiefer, and I then sent to the head engineer at Bardessono, and they had already gone to the electric battery-operated blowers, I think mainly for their customers and clientele. But I did pass my verbiage on to them and asked if it was okay that I describe it as such, and they both said, "Sure, that's what our feelings are about it, is the more comfortable it is for everyone and the better we can treat the environment."
Just one additional piece of information as it relates to the Bardessono. They've started their practice as part of their LEEDs, environmental, so from a sustainability standpoint, they started with electric to begin with, so it's been part of their sustainable approach from the get-go.
All right. Anyone else like to comment on this? Yes.
Seth Tenter, 6740 Jefferson Street. I really agree a lot with what has been put forward, but I think it's also important to reiterate what they'd said about a rebate and reimbursement, and not just focus on banning gas-powered leaf blowers, because it's important also to consider, like they said, viable alternatives like electric and easing that transition, because I know that many of the companies that offer yard care services may not have a significant amount of capital to invest in electric leaf blowers when they may not be able to sell gas-powered ones on a secondary market. And so I think that that rebate or reimbursement is a really important part of the whole process. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to add? Okay. Additional discussion from council? Councilmember Durham, did you have any further comment?
I wanted to comment first on the fact of how this whole process played out. I think you all came to my office hours, might have been six, eight, probably eight months ago. And whether I agreed with what they were proposing or not, we had a great discussion. There was a group of you that had a perspective. You took my comments and opinions to heart, I took yours to heart as well, and to hear the comments from the rest of the community as well. It's nice to see it play out this way, it's nice to have it come to us. Yesterday, I was asked why I wasn't doing more for something else in this town, and it was just interesting how this has played out, so I highly respect this process and thank you very much. With that being said, I would like to recommend that the town come back to us with some sort of proposal, so we could at least discuss it and see what would work best for the community as well as the business owners.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes. I'm one of the 1.6 million Californians who has asthma. I've been hospitalized for it in the past, and so this is very important to me for my health. I live in an HOA where the sound of the, and the smell, I just have to stay inside with all the doors and windows closed on those days at that time. I also want to commend the young man, because I can understand how this may be a hardship to some of the purveyors of garden work, who aren't a big company and may not have the capital, so I would support also a rebate or a reimbursement of some sort to help them transition to this in the future. So, with that said, I thank you. My friends are in that group, and I so appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Mueller?
No, I think I'm, the only way we can really have a conversation is to really put an agendized item up with alternatives. I, too, would really like to hear from our other stakeholders, such as the businesses. I think that they're an integral part, and also the town. I mean, you know, because the town's involved with a lot of our parks and our streets and things like that, so I think that conversation needs to have, be had. I know St. Helena has a modified leaf blower ordinance of some type.
Actually, for background on that, the town's Public Works Department, we're actually in the process of phasing out already. We're researching the available technology with regard to battery. So it's an evolving technology, and I think it's fair to say that the leaf blowers and the vacuums that are vacuum, or excuse me, that are battery-operated are becoming more efficient, more effective. We still will have a large education outreach, but that's not atypical of something like this, not really different than the noise ordinance.
But, you know, I think another big piece of this really needs to be a discussion around enforcement. We currently just enforce our leaf blowers during certain times of the days and certain days of the week, and it's, so a discussion around how difficult that is and what we really do to mitigate that. I mean, it's, on the weekends, unfortunately, it's really up to neighbors, you know, letting the, our police officers know so that they can enforce it, because that is how we enforce things on the weekends. So I think we have to have a conversation around that, too.
I think also, one of the major education outreach is they're going to have to go to the individual property owners, because it may come as a surprise, but most of Yountville does not do their own yard work. So, but they're ultimately going to be responsible for what their landscape firms do or don't do. So if they're allowing, so that's why I'm saying, part of our outreach needs to go to them to say, "This ordinance has been put into effect, a phase-in period, timing, all makes a lot of sense." But I mean, and it's also not going to be a one-time education, it's going to be ongoing education over a number of years until we reach out to all of the business community that is associated with that.
Vice Mayor, do you have comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I also met with the committee some time ago, and I will just say, I mean, cutting to the chase, I'm going to support that we hear from staff on something back, but I will also say, at the jump, I was like, "Oh, no, I'm never doing that." But then the science started coming out, and so now here I am saying I would support looking at it going forward. I am, I would ask that as the group and staff continue to work together, cost is a factor. Where do we, somebody will be coming to a budget meeting if we're looking for rebates and reimbursements, so, I mean, because that's where we would get the money. I like the idea of the sort of natural progression. I think Ms. Claire Gottsch mentioned that with a timeline, because we can't just go from A to B. I also am interested in this at this time, because I think although we're kind of ahead of the curve, I think maybe we're not that ahead of the curve anymore, and I have concerns of a push-down, because as our attorney said, it's not regulated at the state right now, but things are coming out of the legislature all the time. So if we can do something that satisfies all of our stakeholders, that would be a good thing, I think. So thank you.
And I'll just add, much of it I already shared with you, and you were all convinced that you were going to have to really hard-sell me on this idea, and after just a few minutes, I'm like, you had me at hello. And it's how we get there, that's true, we need to respect the small businesses especially. We already talked about financial opportunities. We are looking at this already as a countywide effort with the Climate Action Two-by-Six Group that we have. Councilmember Dornbecker and I are representing Yountville on that group, that committee. So we're, none of this is too small. You should not be concerned about it being too small. One of the points I made at that committee was we need to focus on things that we can actually impact locally in Napa County and specifically here in Yountville, and this is a way we can do that in a very positive way. Talking about the financial opportunities, the county of Napa has already put $100,000 into that regional or countywide climate action effort. Other jurisdictions are likely to put some money into that as well. We may be seeing this as a countywide effort as we go forward and have our conversations on that committee. This will certainly be one of the recommendations that we can put forward to say, not just here, not just St. Helena, but throughout. You also had me convinced to go to one of our local big-box hardware stores and research the costs of the other technologies. Looked like it was about $100 to have an actual vacuum, battery-powered vacuum as opposed to the blowers, because we do have two issues, we have noise and we have pollution. So eliminating the noise and the pollutants of the gas power, the twin edges is one thing. What are we doing with the debris? That's the next step. You could do both those steps, I think, at the same time, and not incur additional costs. But Air Resources Board, you know, we have locally not only what the county's done, Sustainable Napa County has a way to reach out to other state or national financial resources we can look to, so it doesn't just fall on the town to pay for this. The town may be in a position to help, but it might be that it's better coming from some of those other agencies that are committed to climate protection and air quality. They have that money available, and we should tap into it. So with your help, I think you could still be support and advocates for our staff, so that, and that's, we saw this play out, I believe I mentioned it, we saw this play out in very real, in a very real positive way with the pickleball supporters. They did a lot of research, they brought a lot of data to us, and we found a way to put some money into something that dozens and dozens of our residents found is a passion for them. That happened to be recreation, this has to do with health and welfare, but I see it the same way, that having our residents, like you and others, bring this forward to help us, then take that and run with it on your behalf, I think makes total sense. So I don't want to tie our staff to a meeting specific, it sounds like November, December is possible, let's not promise that quite yet, but it might move quickly, but it also might take some more time as we look into ordinance language and some of the other impacts that we have. But I think you're hearing unanimous support to move in this direction, how we get there, and how quickly we can get there, still to be determined. But we do want to be sensitive to our business owners and the companies that could feel a financial impact, but when we're talking about 12-month, 18-month, whatever it is, phase-in process, as they are transitioning out of the current equipment, don't buy another gas-powered leaf blower, buy an electric vacuum. And so there really isn't a new financial impact in some cases. So I'll leave it there. I think you're hearing some very positive support from the council, so thank you for all the research and the work you've done, and making this kind of a front-of-mind issue for our community, because I think we can do better with our health and welfare, at least in this regard, so thanks very much for that. So with that, that is our presentation for this evening. Again, thank you for all the research that you did. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will go on to our next agendized item, item 9A regarding parking improvement plans.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and Joe will help with some of the overview. Real simple, this item is a short series of items that the council has previously directed staff to bring back to you. You've had a number of parking workshops and discussions, and you also established a parking ad hoc committee, but these particular course of action were previously, council gave guidance to move forward. So they include the following. Recover and restore parking in existing town public right away at the following locations. So tonight, you will be taking action if you adopt the resolution, including North Washington Street adjacent to 6770 and 6674, more familiar to people as Ponchos and Chichios. And I should point out, this is the existing town public right away, and also along the South Jefferson Street side adjacent on the eastern side of Vandeleer Park, but not encroaching into the park right away. So it's the area adjacent. The second action is to implement a three-hour parking limit, and the proposal is for three areas. The first area, being on the north end, will be the adjacent to the playground at Yountville Community Park, immediately adjacent. The area adjacent to the cemetery remains on time, so only, only one section there. And then the area from Padrone to Madison would be three hours, so that's roughly Jessup, Stewart, Ponchos, and Chichio. And then on the south side of Jackson Street, closest, excuse me, south side of Washington Street, adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park, roughly from Champagne Drive to Washington. So those are the three areas that you see on the slide above. Implementation will require signage. The signage is necessary for law enforcement to be able to enforce and issue citations. We are keenly, and I stress keenly, aware of the council and community's preference for as few signs as possible. Having said that, we will be having to put those in place with what meets the minimum requirements to be effective, so we will work with law enforcement and our public works team. The size of the signs are the traditional regulatory no-parking, speed-control, existing restriction, 24 minutes where we have a few, which is a 12 by approximately 18, would wrap, and again, where possible, they will be put on existing streetlight poles and/or existing signposts. Background on this, we also presented an overview of these items to the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, and we also shared, in a more broadly sense, the whole range of topics, and I share this, there's a range of topics on parking that are being discussed, most of which aren't before you tonight. And the reason I say they're being discussed is they're either going through the parking ad hoc committee to vet, to determine what moves forward, and they may come back. So a few of those ideas have yet to really be flushed out. So tonight, we're really focusing on these items, and then the one last item is to implement a ban in limo on, or excuse, a ban on limo and bus parking in residential. It's been noted that our existing ordinance has language in there, and that is correct, but our existing ordinance also has a requirement that it can't be enforced unless signage is put up. So this last particular approach will be to a... particular approach will be to identify at the various entry points in Old Town. And then, on Mulberry, that bus-limo parking is not permitted. And then, we're also gonna try to design our signage so that we advise them that parking is available at the very north end of Yountville Community Park. So, I don't know if you have any questions. Most of this has been, this is really more of a formality because of the requirements that we want to come back and make it really clear with regard to the actions that we're taking and the approval. With that, Joe and I and Gary are available if you have any questions.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I have, I'd like a clarification. It was confusing because you included in the staff report to evaluate conversion of Lincoln Street and Grant Street adjacent to the Yountville Community Park to one-way traffic, that configuration, and also the slotted-in diagonal parking. But I want to clarify that that is not part of this ordinance tonight.
That's correct. And we shared that. And I say, that's why we had a broader discussion of all of the things that are being considered at the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission meeting. Some of those people are here in today's audience. But again, those actions will be going to the Parking Ad Hoc Committee and have yet to move forward. So, that's absolutely correct. The only action you're taking tonight are on the recovery and the identification of the installation, the design work for installation of the parking tees, the three-hour parking limitation, and the installation of signage for the bus-limo prohibition in the residential areas.
I have one more question, please. So, I was wondering why on the limo parking, Oak Circle wasn't included in that list? Because that is frequently, the corner of Oak Circle and Washington Street are, you know, regularly, there's something, you know, idling right beside the bank.
If the council would like one added, it can be added.
Parked illegally.
We were focusing on where the public commentary had come from in the prior meeting. So, if the council would like to add that and the sign necessary, we are certainly capable of doing that.
Well, it's actually already red, and it's already illegal, frankly. And so, it's about additional dedicated enforcement.
And signage.
And catching, catching the illegal parking when it happens.
It could be put out further if you're concerned about intrusion into the further Oak Circle. But the, immediately adjacent to the space formerly known as red, does have a red curb, and it has a sign that says, "No stopping, standing, parking." And it is an enforcement issue because a lot of time when there isn't a law enforcement presence, somebody is inclined to violate it, which is not uncommon in other areas when it comes to parking. And that's also one of the reasons the signage is necessary on the hour, three-hour, or any parking limited. Because we do have some 24- and 1-hour parking zones already in the community. But it's important, from a law enforcement's perspective, the driver has to have a reasonable awareness of what the prohibition is. So, if there's no signage and the person goes along the road at which they're allowed to drive on, and they're not aware that they shouldn't be parking, or that it's a short-term parking, then it really isn't appropriate to give them a citation. So, I just want to make everybody really clear, if we want the intended action, we're gonna have to put up with a little bit of signs to provide the guidance. So, I'm just clarity, but we do know that the council's preference is less.
I had one more question, I'm sorry. So, and we already have an ordinance that prohibits everyone just sitting in their car and letting the car idle. Isn't that correct? Isn't that already on the books?
Yes.
Well, maybe we need signage on that, too, because they sit out by, you know, the ratch market and just leave the cars idling. And it's just, it's not good for the environment.
My thoughts on that are, perhaps we can see where this starts, and then if we need to expand the signage. Because this will get, where a lot of the residents were sharing with you their concerns about the limos and the bus drivers. And again, that's an education and an outreach. And I mean, us being at the right spot where a limo driver, I happened to, Sergeant Holman and I were out about together a couple of weeks ago, and we actually came upon a situation. But it's just, it is one of those that's hard to enforce. So, our thought was to go where the residents were experiencing the best impact, or I shouldn't say the best, they were experiencing impact, and we were trying to figure out the best way to try to mitigate that and work on that. And then, if we know where the buses and limos are being sent, then we can monitor and encourage them through the appropriate. And if they don't, then they can get a little ticket to remind them that they do need to turn their vehicles off.
Thank you.
I just wanted to recognize, there's one more in the recitals here about EV parking time limits also.
I'm sorry, yes, that's.
So, those are the four actions that you're asking. Now, again, just to be clear, you've added other maps that are not, as attachments to this staff report, that are not under consideration tonight, correct?
We've provided you the pictures of the background.
I'm just, because it does get confusing. We have Community Center map, Vandeleer map, some of these other locations that are not part of this resolution.
Correct. And part of this is part of the request by the council to be clear and transparent on what is being discussed broadly out there. And those were part of the items. And we'll continue to look at those. And those will go to the Parking Ad Hoc Committee. And then, based on the direction of the Parking Ad Hoc Committee, for example, something that the, you know, the council expressed an interest in looking at the front of Yountville Community Park. So, what we're trying to do is let you know that staff has heard what the council has asked us to do. We're working on those. And we will use the Parking Ad Hoc Committee and/or public workshops going forward as some of those play out in terms of whether they move forward or not.
Okay. Other questions?
I have some.
Okay, hold on just a sec. Did you have another one?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Muller?
So, I am in support of all this, just to kind of get that out of the way. But I always like to come back when we put these new things in place about enforcement. So, outside of what we may be doing if we pass this ordinance, is some of the current issues we have. This is all about parking. We're trying to create new parking and be creative. But, and I think my question is really gonna be, have you had conversations with our sheriffs? Because I've brought it many times, I think it's pretty obvious. You could just even go down Fennel. There's many cars that are just sitting there. They have covers on them. They don't move. So, you know, I think those are some of our basic things, that we have a 72-hour ordinance about, you know, somebody can't just stay parked on a street or in an area all the time. So, and this will definitely put more enforcement in. So, I think when we do these things, that enforcement component has to be an equivalent part of it. So, we can't just pass it and say, okay, we did something. We need to send a clear message to our sheriffs, like, you know, and I have a hot button about a fire hydrant. And they have, you know, I've talked to them many times, and they are, you know, at the end of Fennel and Vista, and they're doing that. But I talk to people when I'm out walking my dog, you can't really park there. It's not painted red. People have that perception, right or wrong, that it's okay to block a fire hydrant. So, I would just want to encourage some mechanism when we put this in place for enforcement. And I really see that kind of lacking here. I know we have other ordinances that really cover that.
Well, actually, with regard to enforcement, I'm actually meeting with the administrative team because we also need to overhaul the bail schedule and a number of enforceable actions. Because the town really has not, since its incorporation, had a modern or contemporary parking, and I'll say, driving management. So, for example, we need to incorporate a few things. We also need to make the consequence of the behavior a little more challenging. So, if, in other words, if it's a $30 ticket, then some of the commercial drivers will just pay the ticket rather than deal with it.
Right.
So, we're actually meeting to go over, look at that. We'll also be addressing if there needs to be some changes. We'll also be looking at certain ways that staff may be able to, here, I mean, town staff, may be able to be, I'm gonna use the word deputized, but not in a, but in a sense for parking enforcement management. There are some provisions of state law that allow us to issue tickets. So, we're gonna be reviewing that. Enforcement is always going to be the challenge. I mean, I'm just, I'm not gonna be naive and tell you that we just decree it. Because if anybody remembers, I just look at how many people drive 60 between here and Napa. So, I think we need to be real, we want to be realistic. But the first thing we have to do is put the programs in place and then train and work with law enforcement. But Sergeant Holman is very receptive, interested. And like I say, we have, actually, the meeting is this week to start talking more broadly about how to, how to work on updating that and various things.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, thank you very much for the report and the explanations. I know you were looking right at me when you said keenly aware, so you can know this next question. I briefly counted 16 signs for the buses and limos in residential areas added or placed somewhere. Is there, and you don't have to answer this question tonight, but my question is, is there some way that we possibly could consolidate, like, put a sign at the gateways to town and say, dump park in a residential area? I'm sure you've already looked at that. Like I say, you don't have to answer tonight. I just, with my keen awareness of signs, ask that you continue to look at that. And then, my real question, my sort of more overarching question is, I want to follow up on something you said, and I just want to make clear, we're gonna follow our usual process on everything that is not before us tonight. Four items are before us tonight. Everything else, we're gonna follow our usual process. We'll have, it'll come to council, it'll go to our advisory committees, we'll have public input. We'll, it'll all come in due course. This is the beginning of our parking conversation.
Well, it's.
It'll be, go through the ad hoc.
You've had several of them, and I'll just point out, and that's why part of the conversation has already been started with the Park and Rec. In a very public, transparent, just saying, these conversations are occurring. So, we're not hiding or trying to disguise it's, but they start in a certain spot. What's new is we have a Parking Ad Hoc Committee, so they have to review certain things and bring forward. But yes, I mean, when it comes to looking at the broader, and I'm gonna use the north end where we have the potential one-way circulation and the potential build-out of the town's public right of way, very similar to all of the other right of way on Washington, yes, that will, that will go through, the Parking Ad Hoc Committee will hold a community workshop on that topic. What I anticipate is you're going to see small, finite topics, because most of this revolves around location and the interested parties. So, that's something, again, we'll be working with the Parking Ad Hoc Committee as those ideas move forward.
Councilmember Durham, did you have any questions of the staff report?
Yeah, you were talking about recovery parking. Does that include Vandeleer, or are you just going ahead with the tees at Vandeleer?
Vandeleer's on the list, I think.
Yes, I didn't see it on the list on the ordinance. So, I was confused.
It's not listed in the resolution that I see.
No, it's not.
Let me.
The ordinance shows Padrone and Madison for three hours, Yountville Community Park, south side of Jackson for three hours, public parking west side of Washington, south of California to Champagne, three hours, limousine and bus parking prohibited in Old Town and east of Ivy Court on Mulberry, and then EV parking limited to four hours.
Right. The items in the recital there are the enforcement actions. So, the recovery is a separate for both?
Okay. So, the Vandeleer will be a part of this, as well as the.
Correct.
Realignment in front of the Community Center that you.
No, the Community Center is not. The only, the only recovered areas are Vandeleer Park and North Washington adjacent to Ponchos and Chichios.
Very good.
But to your point, there are other potential recovery areas that the council has asked us to look like, look at, including in front of the Community Center and including looking at Creek Street.
And going forward, can we use a term that's a little more understandable than recovery locations? Because I think that's causing part of the confusion that I get.
Happy to use whatever you all would like.
Yeah, if it used to have parking, it no longer has parking, or we're talking about changing the type of parking, let's just make it very clear. And also, let's just make sure that we understand how many of these elements are included in tonight's resolution for consideration. So, if now Vandeleer, the tees on Vandeleer, they're not listed under the resolution?
The resolution focuses on restrictions and enforcement. So, that's what you're adopting in the resolution. If you would like to include, but I'm just saying, the, Joe, you have any, in looking at that, is there anything you want to?
Our thoughts were, the municipal code requires you to approve the three-hour parking and the other parking, time parking. It was not mentioned in the municipal code as far as the adoption of the parking on Vandeleer. That's a.
We can add a clause if you'd like to specifically state that the council is authorizing the use of the public right of way for parking in those locations. We can add that to the resolution.
I think we typically include all of the actions we're taking in the resolution.
We can add that.
Is that not correct?
We can add that.
So, I think we need to do that here as well. If we have this on the books, and then somebody comes back and says, what are you doing over at Vandeleer Park? They can't go to this resolution and find out.
We can make that change.
So, you have two, you would have two proposed changes. One would be for the north end of Washington in front of Ponchos and Chichio? Or is that fall, does that fall under the three-hour?
It doesn't fall under.
Between Padrone and Madison?
I would suggest that if you want to, if you would want to identify, my suggestion would be you add a clause that says, authorize the use of the existing public right of way for parking at, and we put the two street addresses, Ponchos and Chichios, and adjacent to Vandeleer Park. Because that action is distinctly separate than establishing that there'll be three hours. Because, for example, at Vandeleer Park, it's not going to be three-hour. We're not proposing three-hour parking there.
Understood.
So, I would encourage you to add that sentence if that would be what you would like.
Does that speak to your question?
Thank you.
Does that sound satisfactory as an option for us to consider?
Yeah, I just, I'm fine with the resolution, the way it's rented. Rented?
Written.
Thank you.
No problem.
So, I just want to make sure it was included in that. Thank you.
Other questions about the staff report? What is our plan for cyclists that park either at Yountville Community Park or south of Veterans Memorial Park and go for more than three hours for a bike ride using the Vine Trail?
Well, there's a number of the, first of all, we can encourage people to use the commuter parking lot right adjacent to the Vine Trail. And there would be parking on the, if you're at Veterans Memorial Park, you could park on the opposite side of the street with no time limit. And then, up at Yountville Community Park, really only one small segment of all of the public parking around the park is three hours. So, all the others would be available for those that are parking long-term, whether they're an employee, visitor, or bicyclist.
And I think in part of this, the multiple conversations we've had about parking to date, I should say numerous, not multiple, numerous.
Oh, no. Multiple upon numerous.
We've also had brought up, people coming to town, everyone's used to using an app to either go to a website or something. And how are we going to try to use technology to help have people park in the right places? What are we doing about that? If, we may not be doing that yet, but I think we need to be doing that.
It's on the, it's on.
If we're, if we're asking people, because we clearly are a popular cycling location to park and go riding. And if we're saying you can no longer park here for more than three hours, then we should be able to offer, where can you go? Like, the park-and-ride spot over by the golf course. But a lot of cyclists probably don't know that that's available to them. So, we need to add that to some of the solutions and not just the restrictions.
I mean, I'm not gonna argue that. And I think we're working on an app, because part of our public parking is using and identifying where. I don't know that everybody will sign up for Myville, that it's not from town, but we'll work on a strategy to advise them. And again, like I say, in the areas we're looking at, there is adjacent parking that is not restricted. So, it's just a question of them. And I certainly think when we have, you know, we practice our enforcement with education first. So, I'm sure that the deputies and staff working on this will work with people to let them know, because the outcome is long-term behavior.
All right. Vice Mayor, additional questions?
Following on your comments, Mayor, it might be good, Chamber has its new. Following on your comments, Mayor, it might be good, Chamber has its new website up and running, and it already has a robust website. If we could somehow partner with them on where to find parking, that might be a fine way to at least get started.
We can do a lot of things. I, I'm just not quite as convinced as the mayor is that people, when you go to San Francisco, you're right, everybody's got an app where all the parking is. I am just, we got to figure out, and maybe we are going to have to do that. Welcome to Yountville, sign onto this app for all the information you need when you come in, because I do think there's a lot of good information that we have that we struggle to get into the hands of the visitor.
Well, we have a millennial in the audience that could help us create an app that everybody's going to use, I think, so don't rely on us to do that. We have a couple millennials in the audience, as a matter of fact. Okay, I think that's it for questions from the council. Members of the public, anyone who would like to comment on this, please come forward.
Frank Altamura Jr., Chicho. In July of 2012, prior to our opening, Chicho entered into a no-parking agreement with the town of Yountville, where Chicho would pay for the installation of a no-parking sign to prohibit parking immediately adjacent to the front patio of our building. Over seven years later, during the week of August 12th, Chicho's staff noticed that the sign had been cut down. After a brief investigation, we discovered that the town's public works, not Vandals, were to blame for the sign's removal. In the weeks following this incident, we learned that the town's proposal to add parking to the front of Chicho, and have come here today to state our opposition to such. We have prepared and submitted a list of grievances for this action, but would like to focus here on those that affect public health and safety. But before I do so, I'd like to remind the town council members of the building's current arrangement. First, under our use permit, Chicho and its guests have the right to occupy and utilize the patio for dining services. It is not a sidewalk or thoroughfare for pedestrians. Second, the non-conforming building and its facade has been designated by the town as a historic structure. Third, there is no curb, sidewalk, bike lane, or landscaping between our building and the roadway. A narrow strip of asphalt is all that separates our guests and the building from moving traffic. Given the circumstances, we have our concerns about public health and safety when the town proposes that cars be allowed to occupy that space. First, in an emergency evacuation due to earthquake or fire, the parked vehicles will create an obstacle that prevents building occupants from directly accessing a public way. Again, there is no sidewalk or space between the building and vehicles. Second, the patio is supported by wooden posts and overhangs of the parking space. Vehicles attempting to park will accidentally strike the structure, as they have in the past, causing property damage or failure that could endanger patio occupants. Third, the proposed parking arrangement blocks our only public entrance and inhibits ADA access to our building. Fourth, since there is no sidewalk, pedestrians will be forced to navigate around vehicles and enter the oncoming traffic of the roadway. Fourth, the town ordinances for off-street parking require stall with some nine feet, but the distance to our overhead parking, to our overhead structure is less than eight feet. Six, rideshare services use this space today to park, to pick up and drop off passengers, rather than doing so in the middle of the street. As it pertains to the operation of our business, exhaust fumes and unsightliness of vehicles inches from our guests is detrimental not only to customer experience, but also to occupant health and the general aesthetic of a historic building. We also fear that further obstruction to the front view of our building, in combination with the 30-foot market sign, will lead to more confusion about the nature of our business. To conclude, we have brought these issues to your attention, and would like to ask members of the town council why we would have further damage to our business, put the public at risk, and expose themselves to significant liabilities for public injury and ADA complaints, just to gain a few parking spaces. So we appreciate if the town of Yountville can clarify today if parking is currently or not allowed or not in front of our building, considering that the sign was cut down in August. We just weren't sure if a decision was made already or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does either our town manager or town attorney want to respond at this point to any of those claims? Maybe clarification, and maybe I misheard it, about the use of what they're calling a patio? And seating out on the patio, the sidewalk?
The area in front of the, first of all, Chichio's and Ponches reflect a, a very unique era. When they were approved, they are predate incorporation. So the public right-of-way and the town actually owns the public right-of-way, and the overhang at Chicho's actually comes out into the town's public right-of-way. So their use permit allows them to put a table or two, right now they have benches out there. The ADA access is not blocked, because, Joe, if you want to pull the picture up, if you could, the ADA access comes from their side parking lot. We've reviewed a number of the concerns. We also met with Frank Jr. And if you look at this, you can see where the ADA striping from the parking lot is, that comes into the entryway. One of the things that we also looked at in response, if you see, the parking is not continued to the area that's adjacent to the striped ADA, and that was done in response to the concerns. That allows for visual, lack of visual obstruction, and also would potentially allow for the rideshares that they're, that they're saying occur, drop off in front. So the rideshare dropping off is really no different, it's just short-term parking as opposed to long-term parking. We understand very clearly that they would prefer not to have the parking in front of their business. I mean, we, we've addressed some ideas that we could help work with them on that. But it really is the, here we have a, a conflict in the no-yo business community about, you know, there's a parking supply shortage, and what can we do to increase the parking? So I get it, we fully understand, and as you can see there, there's the outline of how the parking would go. The public access, like I say, in this case, the overhang and actually the lean-to on the Ponches are actually in the town's public right-of-way.
So if you look at the same map at the very south part of that, you could see the sidewalk that does exist in front of the driveway into Stewart Cellars. Correct that, yeah, right there where the red dot is. Can you run that red dot north to show where the public right-of-way continues? So it-
Straight to the other sidewalk.
That's the street right-of-way adjacent to the dot, if you will, that would be where the sidewalk. And in, in the case of Chicho's, there is a portion of sidewalk that is in between the, where the parking would be. There is not a curb, but there is a, about four, four-and-a-half foot of sidewalk that's in the town's right-of-way. And then on the Ponches side, the overhang obstructs into what would be the sidewalk. So you can see where the sidewalk would continue.
So the point I'm getting at is if, if the sidewalk, and I remember several years ago, we received a presentation about actually building out the sidewalk on that public right-of-way, and there was a pushback that it was making that part of town look too urban. And so we kind of ditched that, that effort. But if I'm hearing you correctly, are you saying that if you extended the sidewalk directly north from the current sidewalk at Stewart, across the driveway entrance at Ponches, in front of Ponches, are you saying that there would be room for the sidewalk as well as the parking?
Yes, because where, you see the lean-to, where Joe's right at, that's actually in the right-of-way.
So that's, that's public property, town-owned property right there.
But it's a grandfathered situation, much like the overhang at Chicho's. So to your point, the town has taken a conservative approach in respect to the history of the buildings, and hasn't pursued the installation of the sidewalk.
But Mr. Altamura's, hold on, Mr. Altamura's point is that that's been a grandfathered condition, and it doesn't warrant changing that condition, because they haven't changed the use or structure in any way?
We're not changing that with this action. You're simply using, this is a redirection to use the public right-of-way for parking. And I will simply remind everybody, when Sally Gordon's was operating, people parked in front and used the parking right there. And they currently park in front of Ponches and have for the whole duration that I've lived here.
Gary, do you have any comment from a legal perspective?
Yeah, so what I would add is, based on conversations with your public works director and also the town manager, this is in the public right-of-way, this is something the town can do there. To the extent they're encroaching into the public right-of-way, they're never going to gain a vested right to continue doing so. Not against a public agency like the town. There's no prescriptive easements or adverse possession against the town. And so as far as it goes to affect the use, as long as we're not unreasonably interfering with the use that is permitted by the use permit, which would mean they can't functionally use it for that purpose, then using the public right-of-way in this way is permissible.
And if I'm understanding their, their claims, they are considering those as detrimental to the operation of their business, your interpretation is that's not the case. Is that accurate?
Right, because, I mean, functionally, all things that the town does affects businesses in the area in some way or another. And it's not that level of affecting it that, that counts in as for this analysis, right? So it's like, we can't open up our shop, or, you know, something very high. Not just, not just affecting traffic flow or affecting parking patterns.
Okay. Councilor Dornbecker?
Yes, Mr. Altamura Jr. mentioned 2012 no-parking agreement. What is the story about that?
If you recall, in the packet that you all had received earlier, that was a one-year agreement. It was never renewed.
Hold on. Other questions about this particular item? Councilor Durham?
Can you speak to the August 12th Public Works taking the signs down?
What I have been told on this incident was that a vehicle, a motorhome or something backed into it, the sign was recovered in Ponches by a Public Works employee, not that Public Works took the sign down.
Very good. And then the claims, granted, Ponches and Chichio's are two separate properties, two separate businesses. But the fact that they're right next door to each other, and Ponches has ultimately been operating pretty much exactly as Chichio's will now be operating with that parking, correct?
Correct.
We, we could say that. We could draw that conclusion.
Correct.
What's the health and public, public safety issues that Ponches has had, if any? None that I can think of in the 15 years that I've been here. Is that fair to say?
It's a true statement.
Thank you.
I will entertain, we'll certainly come back to you, Mr. Altamura Jr. Are any other members of the public, before I go back to that? Yes?
Michael Bork, I live on Jefferson Street, right around the corner of that. Every time I walk in front of each of those businesses, I'm struck by, and I'm not kidding, I'm struck by how dangerous it feels to do it. I, I would agree with you that I'm, I'm, I do not know of anybody who's had a problem there. But the people that were standing in front of the restaurant are, I don't feel like walking where they are. It doesn't feel like that's, you know, a sidewalk. So walking in the street there feels safer. In front of Ponches, when there's cars, if I'm going to go to the taco truck or something like that, it feels really dangerous to me. Particularly now, when, when so often in the year we have so much traffic. So many people who are going in the evenings and things like that. When I would go to the taco truck, there's so much traffic there on weekends in particular. And I don't know about you guys, but I worry a little bit about people who've been out in the Napa Valley all day, and they're in their cars, and there's a lot of people walking around, and there's a lot of people who are stopping and letting them out. If I had RH or other things like that, that can be very confusing there. So, I mean, I, I have to admit that I have not thought about this. I was thinking about something else that was part of this package. I would vote for not putting anything there. To gain a few, few parking spaces there, I don't think is worth the possibility that somebody's going to get into trouble. My two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not had a chance to speak yet? Yes?
Frank Altamura, Yountville, California, one of the owners of Chicho, with my boys. Just a couple things, I just wanted to reiterate. The no-parking agreement saying it was for one year, there's nowhere in there it says it's one year. And even the encroachment thing with the plants, I know that Joe brought up, there's nothing that says one year on it all. And you don't bring it up for, since 2012, when we did it, now all of a sudden you're talking about, oh, it was only for one year. You've had no parking there at all. You're going to pick up like two spaces. You're going to block our entrance. It's our main entrance to walk into the building. It's not through the side. Our use permit says we can have eight seats for dining outside. There's drawn in on the plans, two tables on each side, and our entrance is through the front. It's not coming through the side, and you could go and walk by all the people that are eating there and that stuff. They can't get in that way. The handicap people can't get through there. They've got to go around the front like they've always done, and go through the center, and go into the door. When you open the door, it's only about three feet away from these little six-by-six posts, and they've been hit twice. That was one of the reasons we put those olive trees in the pot there, because the posts have been hit twice. Now, you get somebody with a drink or two in them or something, and they hit the posts, it's going to come down, it's going to kill somebody. You're going to have a kid going out that front entrance, which is the main entrance to the building, between two cars, and they're right in the traffic. Nobody's ever put any curbs, gutters, sidewalk anywhere there. And honestly, for us to bring up all these points, and for then, for you guys just go ahead and do it, it's a little bit negligent. And I think if somebody gets hurt, it's going to be 100% on you guys, because you've just, you've done it for two parking spaces. And as far as no problems at Ponches, Ponches doesn't have seats out in front. They don't have chairs, they don't have wide-open porch where people are walking around, standing to go in there. They go inside of a door, it's about four or five feet back, and they also have a back entrance. So if there's an emergency, they can get out the back. We got one way out. Somebody hits that pole and the fire starts, they're not going to get out. And you're going to have vans, and you're going to have buildings and everything parking right in front of the damn restaurant. They're not going to be able to get out of it. You're blocking all the light that comes into the restaurant. It's just there's fumes going into the restaurant all the time. People park in there, people are trying to sit there, have a drink, have an appetizer. Or in the summertime, we've got the doors open, because it's, it gets cooled and styled that way, because it's an old building, we open up. There's people parking in and out and just blocking everything. It makes no sense. And you're also going to get like two parking places. There was always parking from Ponches back, which is fine. If they don't care, then fine. That's just a wall. There's nobody sitting right there. But our place has people sitting there every night, just waiting for a table, or having a drink, or having an appetizer, or something else. You're taking away like the tables to serve people, and it's a really, really dangerous situation. And I got to be honest with you, it'd be 100% on you guys, just to get two parking places, because that's all you're doing it for. There's nowhere else, up and down that street, the other restaurants, the other houses, everything on that street, you've got any kind of parking. And all of a sudden, you want two places in front of Ponches. I mean, it's just a little, not just suspicious, but a little weird, of why you'd block the entrance to a business. So, I mean, I don't see the reason why, for two spaces. So that's all. I'm just asking. I don't, I don't-
I'll just ask you then. Do you acknowledge it's the public right-of-way?
I think you guys own it, yeah. That's fine.
So-
You explain that when somebody gets killed, and you say, well, it's okay, because it's a public right-of-way.
So you then would support putting in a formal sidewalk in the public right-of-way that would then protect your patrons that are on what you call-
If it's back far enough.
-patio, I call a sidewalk.
Yeah.
So you would, you would support-
If you had a sidewalk in front of the building, in front of the posts and stuff like that, I mean, I know you're trying to get smart and say, oh, it goes into your thing, and it's like-
Excuse me, no, I'm asking you-
Yeah, the sidewalk's going to go into your doorway.
No, I'm asking you-
And you're going to lose your cables.
Factual question.
Okay.
If the, the situation I just described-
Yes.
Continuing the sidewalk north from Stewart-
Okay.
That would go right in front of Ponches and your restaurant-
Okay, good. Why don't you go about seven feet or so out in front of the posts, so people have a way to walk?
So you support-
Instead of saying, oh, it's our public, then you're still going to be up against the building. I don't care if it's right there or not. No matter what you want to call it.
Put the idea of putting a sidewalk in there, then?
In front of it.
In the, in the right-of-way?
Seven feet in front of the building. No, not in the right-of-way, okay? You've got that center lane you could eliminate, and you can do it easily, make it look nice on that side. Then I have no problem with, I don't like cars parked right up against the front of our building.
So are you not acknowledging that what you're calling your patio, I call a sidewalk, is owned by the town?
Yes, I think it is owned by the town.
Okay. But you want seven feet west of that to have a park, a sidewalk curve out-
It'd be the city's, just like you got, it's your property anyway, seven feet out.
In front of your business.
It's seven feet out, it's your property still.
Right, it is.
It's not my property, right.
It is, you're part of the public.
Right.
It's the public's property.
I'm just saying, you can do all that stuff, and you can talk kind of clever and be smart, but that's fine. But if you have parking right up against that little building, and somebody gets hurt, it's not going to be good for you guys.
Are you familiar with Napa River Inn?
Probably not, really, no.
No?
No.
Really?
Really.
Interesting, okay. Because they have a sidewalk that goes right in front of several businesses, right there adjacent to parking. I was just going to use it as an example, that it be a condition that doesn't appear to threaten people's lives.
I think the dangerous thing for me is, I don't care what sidewalks, the way you want to talk it, it's putting cars right up against the front of our entrance. Because you're blocking the ADA, you're- Because you're blocking the ADA, you're blocking the place for the people to get in and out of the building, and the rest of it. So, it's kinda simple, for two parking places. And for some reason, we're the only business, right place in town, you decided to put those parking places. So, that's it.
Mr. Altamira Jr., did you have further comments? We need to hear you up at the microphone.
I think just a clarification or distinction. So, our porch is the patio, which, you know, the, the city does own a portion of that. And so, you know, we wouldn't wanna turn that into a sidewalk, because that's literally our dining patio, so...
That is the town's property. You acknowledge that?
It is the town's, it is the town's property, yeah.
Okay.
And, so, we're talking about the right of way, it's, it's literally through a structure. That was the only clarification. So, you know, if there are sidewalks outside the structure...
The right of way does not go through a structure.
It goes through, it goes through the porch.
Across the front of your, your business that you use for seating, it does not go through a structure?
Well, I consider the posts and the overhang structure.
Right.
To be part of the structure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Pam Reeves, 68, 87, Jefferson Street. I'm struck by the conversation that has occurred here. When I saw this on the agenda, I thought those two properties, Pontius and Chichio's, are the only businesses in town that don't have some sort of separation from the roadway. And granted, that the town owns what's under their patio or their entryway, but that's a grandfathered existing condition from a long time ago. It's been that way since I've lived here for 40 years. We've designated that we like that building, that we think it adds to the community charm. So, removing the structure, or the patio, in order to create a sidewalk, would be going against what we value in this town. So, it feels like, for the aesthetics of town, that place, if you put parking in front of it, would look very awkward. It would also discourage people from walking on that side of the street. It would probably disrupt the taco truck's business. And it feels unnecessary for such a small gain. Parking has only occurred in front of Pontius, in my memory, very recently. The odd car every once in a while, but usually, it's pretty clear. So, it feels like that little strip is different from everything else. So, we should treat it differently. And perhaps negotiate, work with, create a pathway in front of those buildings, so that it is safe to walk there, and move on and do parking somewhere else. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening. Whitney Diver McAvoy, Yountville Chamber of Commerce. I wanna go back and switch gears just a little bit to identifying public parking places electronically, or through a map or something. So, when you just go into Google Maps on your phone, you put in parking, and a little P pops up in the city that you're in. In Napa, there's about 12 different locations. In Yountville, there's one. So, I think there's an opportunity for us to work with Apple, whoever it is, to go ahead and get those public designated places done. Napa's done it, I'm sure we can, you know, figure it out from them. Secondly, I just wanna thank Councilmember Durham and Councilmember Mueller for pulling together the public, the Parking Committee, Subcommittee, Parking Workshop Committee. We had a really great meeting, and I appreciate your leadership on this issue. It's something we've been talking about for a very long time now. So I wanted to publicly thank you for that. The Yountville business community has been very engaged in this issue, and we're committed to working with the council and the town to find solutions. So, thank you for this, and I know this is just the beginning of that conversation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. There's no public hearing to close, but I'll entertain further discussion by the council. Anyone like to start the conversation? Councilmember Durham, you look ready.
It's unfortunate. This parking discussion has not happened in a vacuum by any means. And that's why I asked for the Parking Workshop that we had. That's why I volunteered for the Ad Hoc Parking Committee. I've been on this council for four and a half years, and many of you have come many, many times to discuss parking. And the reason that I, I don't have an issue with parking. I lived in San Francisco for 15 years. I think parking is fine in this community. I've always said, I think probably the issue is with rude employees more than a parking problem. And I still stand by that. And I've seen it happen when I walked through Old Town. And I've led, met a lot of business owners, and I've met a lot of, of the community because of a parking discussion. Whether there be an employee parking in front of their house at 1:00 AM, smoking, listening to music, or whether the community person chooses to put a large boulder out because they don't want someone to park in front of their house. It's definitely a two-way street, so to speak. So, it's interesting to me, with the conversation this evening, I've been told the two spaces in front of Chichi are unnecessary for a small gain, and also because of the safety issue. I believe since that sign's been down, cars have been parking in front of the business. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. And the cars have been parking in front of Pontius, as far as I can remember. As far as I've been in here, as far as I've been walking in and out of that front door. You know, none of this has happened in a vacuum. I apologize, but nothing is suspicious and weird here. We've been talking about this forever. What might be unfortunate is the lack of involvement from community members or business owners to come and help with a discussion, or part of the solution. The Ad Hoc Committee had a meeting two weeks ago. We sat here in this room, I wanna say at least 10 business owners or general managers, people who were engaged, people who wanted to have a conversation, people who were suggesting alternatives, and even more importantly, suggesting solutions. And that was nice, because I finally said, there's a light at the end of the tunnel when I will come to one council meeting and not have parking brought up. Eventually, maybe two years, maybe four. I don't know when that's gonna happen. It's frustrating, because we all know each other, we all see each other, we all interact with each other. You know? And then, to... I'm fine with the ordinance. I'm willing to have discussion more. Here's the thing, when you talk about unnecessary for a small gain, I find it interesting, because I think some of you are here in the audience this evening because of a proposal in the agenda of possibly one way around the park. So, at one point, do we say, well, it's unnecessary for a small gain here, but I don't want it over here as well, because this is where I live? But, you know, all, parking's all local. Politics is all local. This town is all local. It's unnecessary for a small gain here, but at the same time, where are we gonna put the employees? Where are we gonna allow guests and your friends who are coming overnight, or coming to your home businesses, to park then? We gotta look at it as a big picture. And we all fail to do this in this town, because I live over here, and you live over there. Parking's not an issue here. You know, and, and it's really interesting. It's unfortunate, some of the comments that were made tonight, because I've spent way too much time, energy, and focus on this for these comments to be made. And I will continue to work on the Ad Hoc Parking Committee. I will continue to work with the businesses and the community members who want to see some sort of change, and what's best for the community as a whole, not just for a neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker, comments?
Well, I was really moved by what the gentleman around the corner from Chicho said. I, too, have felt very nervous having to walk on the outside of parked cars in the street with traffic. And I also think that there are laws of diminishing returns. And in this case, the, the addition of the spots being minimal, and the, the further, I think, fear of walking past there when the cars are parked there in the, in the street, to me, it really, it, it just sort of diminishes my enthusiasm for, for doing this. So, as of now, that's how I feel. I mean, I, 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 too, don't like walking in the street, you know, on the other side of the cars, in the, in the traffic right of way. And so I can understand the reasoning for having some space for pedestrians in front of that business. So, I, right now, the way I feel is that I, I would not approve of that.
Could you comment on the rest of the resolution? This is only one part of that.
Yes, the rest of the resolution, although having three-hour limit at the, at the park where the playground is, is... Also, I find that, you know, families go there, and they have picnics, and they spend time, and the children are on the, you know... I don't, I think it would be a hardship on them, people who take their children there on the weekends, having to apply for a permit so that they could stay longer than three hours in the parking spot right where their kids are playing. So, those are the two issues. Otherwise, everything else, I think, makes sense. But I, I just, those two things prevent me from supporting this.
Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I, I think I'd like to kind of start off with the, the big picture of Yountville. For a long time, we really just had a lot of development at the, the south end of town. And the north end of town was nice, still sleepy Yountville for, you know, probably for like 20 years, you know, since when I first got here. We really made a major plan to try to create something there, you know, that would connect the, the north and the south end of town, and, and give us a, a whole streetscape along Washington. Perhaps because of the success of all the businesses that have moved in and embraced that north area of town, maybe some of these little nuances about the, the parking are... I don't think they're problematic. I think they're new. And I think it's a change. And I have a feeling that once you get these things in place, people will find ways around there. I, I'm kind of hardcore about not walking in the public right of way, but actually using the sidewalk. Or, you know, and if there's a sidewalk across the street, and I have to go down to the crosswalk, I like to kind of follow those rules. So, that's how I would walk there. I also, in terms of the two spaces in front of Chichio's, we, it took us a long time to get our city monument, town monuments, in place. And the monuments are these things that go in the streets someplace, where you can kind of measure from this one to that one, and you kind of know where the right of way is, and a building starts. So, we only finished those, as I remember, probably from our budgeting, a few years ago. So, we didn't really know exactly where everything was until, until recently. I don't think it would be fair to put parking in front of one business and not another. We do need, in my opinion, every space we can get. I'm also very supportive of the three-hour. What we are actually trying to create is spaces by doing that, where the families can come in, and people can come in for shorter times. And it's not taken up by necessarily employees who aren't parking in their employee parking plan area. So, I think there's kind of two ways to look at that. And so that's how I look at it. It frees those spaces up more for people who wanna come in for shorter-term use. Yes, I agree, they might wanna stay a little bit longer. At least they're not filled with employees that are probably there for eight, nine, 10 hours. I think that we did have a very successful meeting with the businesses. We heard about a lot of other stuff that probably not being discussed here tonight. Like in the R&amp;D kitchen, they've got a lot of people, and they bring, they get there early, they bring, and they get their bikes out of the trunk, and off they go for the day. So, they lose a lot of spaces, because they're a business that doesn't really open until a little bit later, and people see all that parking. So everybody's got a few nuances. We're not gonna be able to solve everybody's problem here. I definitely believe that let's put what we have on the list now in place. One thing that we are good at, if we realize that there is truly a problem, we have the ability and the authority to come back and fix it. So, I'm willing to move ahead and do what we have in this plan right now. There's a lot more pieces coming for all of us to talk about. This isn't, you know, the only thing that is going to happen. We, we do need to have places for our employees, and we need to maximize, you know, little sleepy north end of town. We've got all the businesses there, and now we need a little more infrastructure. And this is just part of it. So, I, I am supportive of the resolution as it writ, is written, except for adding in specific language about Vanderlere Park.
Supporting adding that language in, so that it's all included. Was there, it's been so long now, was there somewhere else?
Yeah.
North Washington and...
Okay.
Yeah.
North Washington, okay. Okay. There's my sol, soliloquy for tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, sort of picking up where Councilmember Mueller left off, I think we need to remember, this is the beginning. I think it's a really good beginning. And we talk a lot about balance here in Yountville. And I think when we look at this issue, in addition to our usual three-legged stool of our residents, our businesses, and our visitors, we now have a fourth leg of folks who come to enjoy our parks or to use us as a trailhead for the Vine Trail. So, we are balancing even more plates than usual. I, like Councilmember Durham, have office hours. And like him, parking is addressed every single time, from all different areas of town. So, I think the recovery of any spaces that we can use is a good thing. On the Chichio's, and I support the resolution as it's written with the additions of the, the two three-hour, the, the two... We're not calling them recovery, the two identified areas. But I would just say, on the Chichio's, and I don't think this is gonna make me popular, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Chichio's is enjoying the benefit of several feet of the town's property. So, to say, I don't mind if you put a sidewalk, as long as you don't put it where I'm already encroaching, I don't think that's a good, fair trade. So to me, it's the town's right of way. I just spent a day in San Francisco. People park right up on top of businesses, and people go about their business. I think if Chicho wants to let us put, if, if they're very concerned about health and safety, let us put a three-foot sidewalk. I mean, let us take some of the encroachment and put a sidewalk. I'm sure we would be happy to do that. But I just, I don't, I get the argument of diminishing returns, I really do. But I think in the north end of town, every space counts. That's not to say that once we get the spaces in, and we get the whole iceberg of parking uncovered, maybe things change again. But for now, I am of the... But for now, I am of the opinion, every space counts.
Thank you. I'll start off by saying I do support everything that's in the resolution as presented and the additional two sections of parking. When Gordon's Cafe existed as a restaurant, there was parking in front of that. There was parking in front of that and it was never an issue. We didn't have children run over, as was claimed in the letter that we received from Mr. Altamira. We didn't have handicapped people hit by cars. People know how to walk around cars that are parked on the side of the road. We added sidewalks on the south end of Washington Street. Some people didn't like that idea and now everyone seems to appreciate that there are sidewalks on the south end of Washington Street. We put sidewalks on the east side of Fennell's Street. And I remember there were people upset that there were now going to be streetlights where you can actually walk safely at night. And now we all take it for granted that there are sidewalks on Fennell. And I do agree, I think part of this is a change issue. Because there has been a condition since the Altamiras converted the previous restaurant used to Chichio, they have enjoyed the luxury of having that public street frontage at their disposal. I do find it incredibly ironic, it's the only parking lot in this town that's chained up when you're not open. I find that really ironic about this whole conversation. So it's not like there is an opportunity for your neighbors to, you know, since you don't open until five, you know, use that during the lunch hour, for example. We would never do anything that would jeopardize public safety. I don't appreciate the fact that that's the accusation that's being made, that we're creating an unsafe condition. I pointed out the Napa River Inn down in Napa because it's a very, I think, similar situation where they have businesses, where they have, they have tables and chairs out on the sidewalk, right next to the parking lot. They even have an 18-inch, two-foot difference in height between the parking lot and the sidewalk that takes three steps when you're in front of the Napa River Inn. People navigate that every day, all the time. I do think part of this is about change. There have been conditions that have been in existence for a very long time that frankly aren't safe. The example, frankly, the example about feeling unsafe walking in the current condition is because the current condition is not usual, it's not normal. There's no clear delineation of where you should walk on the east side of Washington when you get past Stewart Sellers. There's no line, there's no sidewalk, there's no lighting, there's gravel. And so people find that charming, then other people find it dangerous. So then we're left with which, which do you deal with? And that makes it very difficult. We aren't asking to encroach on private property to put a sidewalk in either. We're talking about public property and we're not even, the reason I brought up the idea of the sidewalk is because that was, you know, at least by the folks that have businesses and live at the north end of town, years ago, they're saying, we're going to destroy the integrity of Old Town if we put sidewalks in the way they were being presented because those businesses have that aesthetic from decades ago. And there was not a concern at all then about how safe is it to walk on that side of the street. There just wasn't. It was about, how does it look? And we can't ignore the safety issue. We also can't ignore that there is, there is a very, in my opinion, low-impact solution to adding parking on the east side of Washington at the north side of town. And I'm going to support us painting parking tees on the public street like we have done in other parts of town. If we determine there is truly an unsafe condition, as was mentioned by other councilmembers, we react to that. I don't react well to threats and claims that I'm being flippant or don't care about public safety. I don't appreciate that. And so I'm going to do what I think is in the best interest of the community that does not have, in my opinion, negative consequences for Mr. Altamira's business or any of the other businesses in the area. And if it turns out that that's not the case, then I guess we'll have another conversation, won't we? I'd love for you to take that chain down when you're not using your parking lot, but I don't think that's going to happen either. So I think you get a sense of where I'm going to land on this. So unless there's further discussion by the council, is there a motion to be made?
I would love to make a motion. Let me put my back in here. All right, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 19-3584, adoption of the Resolution Number 19-3584, establishing timed parking zones and other parking management improvements in various locations in town, including but not limited to the north side of Washington and Vandeler Park. Is that?
Gary or Steve, does that cover what we had talked about?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry, did you finish that motion?
Yeah, and I even hit the button after the fact.
No, it's not.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Is there any further discussion about the motion?
I know.
Okay, are we verbal or?
Look at that.
Okay. Why come it's not popping up?
I don't have it.
I have to refresh.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? No, that passes unanimously. Okay. Do we need to hit refresh, do you think, Michelle?
That did make the boxes pop up.
No, Michelle did that.
I was, I don't know what.
Okay, we'll figure out our voting system eventually. Next up is Item 9B regarding Senate Bill Two Planning Grants Program Funding. Let's see, who do we have? We have, is it you? All right, Sandra.
Not me. Good evening. Senate Bill Two was passed in 2017 as part of a 15-bill housing package that's aimed at addressing the state's housing shortage and increasing the supply of affordable housing. It achieves this by offering non-competitive grants to cities and counties to help them prepare, adopt, and implement plans and process improvements that streamline housing approvals and accelerate housing production. The amount of funding available depends on population size and Yountville falls into the small-city category, meaning that we're entitled to 160,000 in grant funds. Now, there are several requirements for SB Two's grant application in order to be eligible for funding, and these include that the town must have an HCD-compliant housing element and must have submitted the most recent annual progress report to the state, both of which the town has done. The application must demonstrate a nexus to housing production. And what this means is that activities or projects must improve the timing, cost, feasibility, approval, or amount of development through mechanisms like zoning incentives, upzoning, changes to development standards, streamlined processes, or other mechanisms that promote the production of housing or remove regulatory barriers. And the third requirement is that the town must demonstrate that the application is consistent with planning, state planning priorities. And these are high-level goals that seek to shape future planning decisions like infill housing development, conservation of natural resources, and encouraging efficient development patterns. Our SB Two grant application is about the Veterans Home and the potential for future affordable and workforce housing development on that site. And we propose using SB Two funds to conduct a housing feasibility study that details opportunities and constraints for housing production and exploring zoning changes or an overlay zone that would accelerate the development process, streamline the approval process, or provide for increased densities of development. And this application demonstrates a nexus to housing development because the site-specific housing study, coupled with the zoning changes or the overlay zone, would reduce the barriers to development of the site and provide for faster or denser development. The project is also in line with state planning priorities because the development of housing would constitute efficient development pattern because of existing infrastructure and nearby services. And the Veterans Home offers one of the best opportunities for housing development in Yountville, and that's both workforce housing and affordable housing, because it's been identified by the state as an excess state property that is suitable for housing construction. And this offers a real, unique opportunity for Yountville. Development at the Veterans Home may also allow the town to count and even surpass its affordable housing goals and RENA obligations. And this, this housing study could be instrumental in allowing us to count that housing toward the next housing element update in 2021. So a complete application requires that we have a resolution of support by the council and that's why the item is before you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the report and for ferreting out these dollars. So if we, the application is pretty lengthy and detailed. And so if we turn in an application and then other funds come available or another project becomes primary to the Veterans Home, can we repurpose the dollars from this grant?
If we submit this grant and are accepted, we have to use the funds for the Veterans Home feasibility study. There is an option, or we've been told by the state, that if there are funds remaining after the first round, that we may be eligible for a second round of funds. They don't know if those will be available. They are non-competitive and they do want all jurisdictions to receive the funds for projects that accelerate housing production within their boundaries.
So we have to specify a project or projects in the application?
We do, yes.
And would we, would it be of any benefit to us to put in two or three projects knowing that the 160 won't cover them, but would that give us flexibility to pick and choose or is that not how the deal is set up?
That's not how it works, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the town already has put $100,000 as a placeholder in the budget. This would be a different color of money, basically, to be able to put toward that effort. And in the town's budget, we did include other sites within the town limits for consideration.
Correct. The, you set aside $100,000 in the restricted Measure S and that could support technical or feasibility studies either at the Veterans Home. In addition, if something's not covered by this, obviously, if we receive this funding, we would hope that that will cover most of our efforts to encourage support of development. But we do also have the Catholic Church property and a few other locations that other feasibility studies. And that's a wide-ranging because it could go from environmental to planning to what are the obstacles to develop it, what would we do. So wide open, but yes, we do have a potential funding source for that.
Any other questions? Any member of the public have a comment on this item? We're going to ask for money from the state and we're hoping they're going to give it to us.
Yes.
It's a good thing. Is there a motion?
I would love to make a motion. Okay. A resolution of the Town Council, the Town of Yountville authorizing application for and receipt of SB Two Planning Grants Program Funds.
Got a second.
Thank you. Are we trying to do this electronically or, yes, please vote. There we go, 5-0. Thank you very much, that passes. Next up, prepayment loan agreement.
This is a relatively simple.
Can you make Sealy stay here all this time? You're going to report on it.
Unfortunately, I see at it. This is a pretty straightforward situation. As many of you may recall, the town took out a low-interest loan for the recycled water plant expansion and compliance update project. At that point in time, when we initially took out the loan, the Veterans Home had not determined how it wanted to proceed, whether it wanted to pay its share upfront or whether it wanted to participate and just pay through the financing structure. So we ended up having to take the full amount of the loan out and then about nine months later, the Veterans Home paid in full. And what we've learned, and Sealy and I were doing a little bit of forensic review, just looking at stuff, but we had put our structure together with the payments and then we were looking at it and realized that there was no prepayment situation and we're sitting with a chunk of money in the wastewater fund that can only be used to pay back. So it really was, I hate to use the word, but it's really a no-brainer for us to go ahead and prepay and save the town and the utility rate payer's a little bit of money.
Any questions? Any questions? We're paying ourselves back a loan that we gave ourselves.
I'll make a motion.
Is that legally accurate, Gary? Okay. Is that a motion? Councilmember Durham or Councilmember Mueller?
Hit the button.
Not mine.
It does?
I'm not.
Okay, let's see.
Yeah. Sorry. Adopt Resolution, I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 19-3586, approving partial prepayment of State Water Resources Control Board Law and Agreement Number 13-802-550, Project Number C-0678-7846-110, in the amount of $1,152,031. And resulting fiscal year, you almost got me, 2019-2020 budget adjustment.
Second.
Okay. See if we got a screen here. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I had no screen. There it is. Okay. That passes unanimously also. Thank you very much. Sister Cities International.
Mayor, Council, I'm just continuing the conversation that you've had over a couple meetings. This is a consideration of a resolution establishing a formal sister-city relationship with Toto Santos Baja California Sur. But I think also, more importantly, it establishes a framework. So it incorporates a formal structure where we join Sister Cities International. And I've included in the attachment the request from Toto Santos for the partnership and the correspondence also from Cindy Sosserman regarding serving as a liaison and also the fact that there is a committee structure. What I think is also important to recognize is that this is really a beginning point because by establishing a sister-city committee, that committee and the council and the partners will determine what level of relationship we want. It could just simply be it's a friendship relationship. It could evolve into something more purposeful, but you'll note in the resolution, we're requiring the establishment of a sister-city committee that would be under the manager's office. So, you know, you all have been discussing this, the staff report, I can answer questions. I do recognize that there is a citizen group interested in being part of the sister-city committee. The council can talk more about whether you want that to be a formal recruited committee and informal committee, but the action before you is, do you want to do it or not?
There are no costs associated. It says there is a fiscal impact, but do we know what the costs are?
Well, the annual dues for Sister City International are $190.
Do you see those as the only cost that we're talking about?
Um.
I mean, other than postage for a letter.
Well, it depends, again, what I'm going to say, it would depend on what the committee actually chooses to do. The committee would have a responsibility for some of the fundraising support, but from an official standpoint, that would be it unless the committee comes back and says, hey, we're interested, what do we want to do? That would be part of your normal budget process.
Okay. I'm sure we have public comment on this one. You don't stay this long and not speak, Mayor Sosserman.
My name is Cindy Sosserman. I live at Rancho de Napa. I live at Rancho de Napa. Steve pretty much summed it up. It's the first step towards establishing this relationship. I would urge you to consider the, the resolution that's before you tonight. I think it's very succinct in the steps that we need to take. I'm anxious to take good news back to Toto Santos. I'm leaving on October 20th. I'll be back there for a little while, and I will come back if necessary to further the cause and implement the programming. I've spoken with the current delegado, Roberto Palacios, AKA Tito. He is thrilled with the prospect, and he was very proud to show me the certificate and the agreement that they have framed hanging on the wall from the city of Seal Beach as a sister-city. And he, he's really looking forward to having discussions with this council and committee as a sister-city, potential sister-city to Toto Santos. So, I mean, I don't know what else to say. It's, it's just taking the first step that would be a thrill for me to relay that information back to the people in Toto Santos. I'm working, currently working down there with a nonprofit. It's an organization that has established a private school for the benefit of local children. They all go to school on scholarships that are generated in the community through events and programs. I think we have something to learn from them and what they're doing, as well as they have something to learn from us and our programs here. I think that if we were to adopt Toto Santos as a sister-city, the, the benefits for both jurisdictions would be welcomed, if not indispensable. I mean, they're just looking, looking for ideas, looking for different suggestions in terms of cultural exchange. I know the Hispanic culture in the Napa Valley is rich and full, and there's lots of programming that's going on, and I would just hope that this council could embrace that and, and perhaps just make, as a small gesture, help to establish that relationship with Toto Santos. And I would be more than happy to facilitate any of the programming, or answer any questions, or address any of your concerns.
So they didn't frame the letter that we sent down there last year?
No, I think it's been recycled.
Wow.
No, it's.
That's not a good first step.
No, that, the delegado that sent that letter asking us to participate has since left office. We have a new delegado. I just mentioned his, his name. I've met him. We've exchanged ideas and gifts and thoughts, and, and that letter is in their files, and it's, it's, it's charming. It's just really charming to see how proud they are of their relationship with Seal Beach, and I know they would be more than elated to, to know that we are accepting their offer as a sister-city.
Thank you.
So I, I hope you will consider the resolution, and I'd be happy to help with the next steps.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mayor, Council, one brief clarification in my brevity. I should also point out that forming the sister-city committee does not preclude additional cities becoming a sister-city. The idea was that there'd be one sister-city committee governing the various relationships, and that you're starting with the Toto Santos. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions specifically, Cindy? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I do have a question of you. In the resolution, the first resolve, establish a sister-city comprised of elected officials, town staff, et cetera, we don't identify what the constitution of that committee is going to be. I know Cindy's letter showed, included some names of, and I see Mr. O'Donnell here tonight, some local residents that are volunteering for that. Do we need to worry about all the other details of that, as it's in this resolution, to have those different categories?
I think that would be an implementing measure. Now, what I will tell you is if you want to lay out the detail, you certainly can, but I think the intent that we have was that, as the committee moves forward, it would have a couple electeds, some business chamber representatives, and the community members at large, so that they could just determine what type of cultural relationship they might want. And then I do have some familiarity with formal programs. In a prior city I worked with, San Bruno, had an established program and relationship with Narita, Japan. And again, these relationships take on what reflects the communities and what their interests are.
I understand, and I think that's quite clear, and Cindy's made it very clear. I just wanted to recognize that you are committing these different groups by having this in the resolution. So is that, I think the council just needs to be okay with that. Vice Mayor?
So, on that same line, if we have concerns about that, we could change the shall to a may, which may include elected officials, town staff, et cetera, et cetera. And then down to number three on the resolution, I am making an assumption that the staff will come back to council and say, here is what we think the committee should look like.
We can certainly do that.
Or, no, I'm, I'm asking. But I do, I do take the mayor's point that perhaps that shall should be a may.
Yeah, and just one thing I'd add on to this, if it's for the council's consideration this evening, if it's just two of you, there's no agenda and Brown Act requirement, if it's one or two of you and other members of the community or staff who are officially on the committee, that does trigger agenda and Brown Act requirements. Either one is permissible, you should just be aware of that.
And to that point, it sounds like this would be a standing committee.
Do we know if the Sister City International organization requires any certain makeup of any of these committees?
They do not. And in fact, some sister-city organizations are actually a nonprofit affiliation of either a chamber, a group of citizens, so they take a whole range of agamots.
Okay.
Many of them do have a city connection or advanced initially by the city.
Yeah. I would support the vice mayor's recommendation on that first resolve to make it a may. I don't think we need to formalize it. I don't think we need to burden it with Brown Act and agendas that whenever there's a committee meeting, it can be reported to the council in a much less formal way. Those, we're still going to be involved in it, obviously, I think, so. Any other thoughts? Anyone else in the audience want to comment on that? Okay. Any other thoughts, or is there a motion to be had?
I'd like to share some thoughts.
Okay.
And that is that I'm very supportive of establishing a sister-city committee. I know that the city of Napa has several sister-cities, and as a matter of fact, I worked with the sister-city committee when the earthquake took place in Japan to raise money for Sendai Province that had been devastated by the earthquake and tsunami. I really, when I was growing up, my older brother belonged to the International House at Villanova University, and I met students from all over the world at that time. And I think that the cultural exchange is a very worthwhile exercise, and I highly support this, and also having a, a Mexican city as our first sister-city, I think, is a wonderful gesture. So I'm in total support.
And I just want to add that my only initial hesitance was putting a burden on town staff to execute on all this, and you took that feedback and got community support, which is key for me. I have support for this as well. Getting that community involvement doesn't burden the staff. It actually gives an example of what our community's all about, which is working together. So that's great also. Any other comments? Did you want to make a motion, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Okay. I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-3587, authorizing the town of Yountville to join Sister Cities International, create a sister-city committee to oversee sister-city relationships, and accept invitation of Toto Santos Baja California, sir, to form a sister-city relationship between the two communities.
With the edit.
I beg your pardon.
With the change of may instead of shall.
With the change of may instead of shall. Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
I will second.
All right. I think we're getting it electronically here. Please vote. I think that's going to be five.
Yes.
There we go. That passes unanimously. You may take that news back when you return.
Can we all get nicknames, too? Beanhead's a nickname? Maybe you come back with nicknames for us.
Be careful what you wish for.
Tell them they better find that original letter, too.
[laughing].
Thank you. Next up, Affordable and Workforce Housing Oversight Committee appointments. We did meet earlier this afternoon, and I'll let our town clerk tell us what we did.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new advisory committee for the town, and this is the result of the Yountville voters in 2018 approving Measure S, which was an ordinance of the people of the town of Yountville, increasing the transient occupancy tax by 1% to fund programs and services related to workforce and affordable housing. And part of that ordinance establishes this committee, and we're fulfilling that obligation and, and moving that project forward by creating the committee. And like the mayor said, we did interview six individuals earlier this evening. We did have seven applicants. One individual had to withdraw this evening. We are filling five seats, three residential, one representing lodging, and one representing a non-business area. Council has submitted their vote tallies, and for lodging, it would, the representative is recommended as Patricia Bardesono. The non-business is Whitney Diver McAvoy, and the residential representation is Hillary Tripp, Terry Moylan, and Richard Board. And with those recommendations, I ask council make a motion to appoint. Their terms of office will be established at their organizational meeting, and they'll be staggered terms of office, some serving two, some serving one, and then from that point forward, when new appointments are made, those terms of office will be two years.
And that's in order to stagger those terms?
Yes.
Like we do.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, I know it's a minor point, non-designated business representative, not, not non-business representative.
Thank you, no, that's a good clarification. Sorry about that.
Is there any discussion, seeing nobody in the audience wanting to comment? Vice Mayor?
So I would move to adopt the votes of council.
Second.
Hang on.
Okay.
One minute.
And please vote.
Oh.
That passes unanimously. I want to recognize also James Shoup, who was an additional applicant, but we very much appreciate Terry Moylan, Hillary Tripp, Pat Bardesono, Whitney Diver McAvoy, and Richard Board, their willingness to join this oversight committee. So thanks to all of them. Next up, we have a informational report, I believe, Joe, you're going to handle this, on the Vineyard Park Tree Plan Update?
Thank you very much, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. Tonight I have for you an update on our Vineyard Park Improvement Plan as it relates to the trees that have been in discussion since early spring of this year, when we brought this forward to you to comment on removal of the trees and a master plan for the park that will be on a future CIP. I should note that we also took this to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee on September 19th. Feedback from that committee was mostly supportive of the plan, including some positive comments and support from members of the public at the meeting. So, just to refresh you all on what has gone on in the park, 14 pine trees that the arborist recommended to be removed and replaced have been removed, and this plan that we're presenting tonight will include the replacement of those trees. We're going to plant, we plan to replace them based on feedback that we have, both from P-RAC and from council, with a mixture of native species, including at least two valley oaks. We left the oak tree that was in the southwest corner of that grove of trees. The arborist thought that after removing the pine trees, that oak tree might actually survive and thrive, given that it was getting a bit more light and some more room to grow. So we look forward to seeing how that tree progresses now that the other trees are removed from around it. Again, just to refresh you all on what was there initially, these are the 14 pine trees that were pretty tied up against the flood wall and shaded a good bit of sports court, dropping pine needles on both some of the adjacent mobile homes and homes in the area, and certainly on the sports court. The Vineyard Park Master Plan, just to, again, update you all on what we presented earlier this spring, that, this is one of two plans, both of which were reviewed by P-RAC and by the council. This is the plan that was a preferred one. Again, this is not something that is set in stone. It is in the CIP queue, but before we do any additional work and improvements in the park, other than the trees, the plan will come forward as we perfect it, as is our practice in all of the CIP programs that we are working on. Just a little bit of a view of what the trees looked like prior to their trimming. As you can see, they were rather tall. The canopies were trimmed up. I think the arborist commented that they were trimmed as a lion's mane or a lion's tail trim, which contributed to the unhealthy kind of progression of the trees. You can see that there are lots of Vs, which aren't great for a specimen, and they're kind of leaning to try to grab more sun, so it was definitely time for them to be removed and for us to plant something that's more aesthetic, able to survive a bit more, and will be a legacy for many years to come. So the first of the trees that we're trying to put in, and I should note that all these trees that we're going to present here in the first few slides are grown here in the valley from seeds that the owner of Main Street Trees grabs, and then helps grow into the trees that you're seeing on these slides. So this is a coastal live oak. One of the things we heard, particularly at the council meeting, was that you wanted something that stayed green mostly throughout the year. So this is our effort to provide one of those kinds of trees that will stay green throughout the year. I should note that this tree is, I want to make sure I get this right, 36 to 48-inch box. We have one of these selected. It's about 20 feet high, and it's somewhere in the 6-inch range diameter right now. According to reports, it's at least 20 feet high. We have a big leaf maple. I think there are seven or eight of these that are at that same location on Main Street Trees. Right now, they're about 10 to 15 feet high. It's a 36-inch box. I had some questions on how tall this tree will grow. It will grow to somewhere around 60 feet. There's, it's a fast-growing tree. It's similar to what we have at Yountville Community Park, and I don't know if I mentioned this, but there's eight of these to be planted.
Yes, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is that a deciduous tree?
Maple.
It loses its leaves.
Yes.
So they'll be all over the courts. So they'll be all over the quartz?
No, not all over the quartz. We're not going to plant them near the quartz.
I see, okay.
None of these leaves will be on the quartz, nor will they be in the vicinity of the flood wall, where they'll cause either problems for roots or drop leaves on the flood wall.
Good.
So.
Okay.
Valley, but they will have really nice color in the fall. Those trees have great color in the fall. A valley oak, we're all familiar with the valley oak. Two of these trees, I think they're a 48-inch box. It's 20-plus feet high right now. These trees last in excess of 300 years. I think as the mayor is fond of saying, or I've heard him say, they grow for 100, they kind of maintain for 100, and they die for 100. So it's quite a legacy to plant. There's two of these that we're planting. And then the last, what's that? [laughing] The crepe myrtle, we're all familiar with that. I think what most people aren't familiar with, or maybe aren't knowledgeable about, and I'm becoming more knowledgeable about these trees, is they can really be kind of pruned and trimmed to match what it's needed for the area. So in lots of neighborhoods, you'll see them kind of more a traditional tree with a traditional canopy. In this particular picture, you'll see they're a little bit lower. One of the comments we heard from a resident in the neighborhood, she was quite concerned that she'd be able to see the flood wall. So we presented this tree, among others, as some that could present some screening of the flood wall, and she was very happy about that choice. So very supportive of this choice. These are a little smaller in variety. They're about 12-foot high right now, and we're going to keep them around 12-foot so they won't obstruct the view of people who might be in the mobile home park. The people who we heard from, in particular, that had comments on the trees that lived at the border of the sports court, in particular, one resident, she wasn't as concerned with the height of the tree, she just didn't want to see the wall. So that's our effort to help kind of provide some cover for the wall. And finally, the last tree is a tree that you're all familiar with. The example that I have here is the one in front of Community Center, Community Hall. It's a strawberry tree. Again, it's a 24-inch box, around eight foot tall right now, and as you can see, they're 20-foot plus. It has a good amount of foliage. It's a native tree. It does have some colorful flowering, and it survives in a lot of different conditions. So this is the tree selection that we have, and we're going to try to plant these in this month. We're working with our arborists right now to find out when that window is. We've got to do a little soil prep. We have taken soil samples, and our landscape architect has given us some recommendations on amending the soil. So we're going to do a little bit of amending of the soil. That has to stay in there for a week or so, and then we're going to have a similar gathering to what we've had in years past, where we'll invite the council and some of the members of the after-school program to help us plant the trees. So that'll be sometime in late October, I would imagine.
Right.
With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions we might have? No, thank you for that update. It looks like it's going to be a real nice evolution of that space.
Thank you very much. One last thing, I think I did have a question about budget. Most of these trees are going to be planted within lieu of fees that we have, either provided on our own, and we have taken trees down, or PG&E or other utility companies when they take trees down. So we have an account that we're drawing out of. So we don't anticipate coming back to you all and asking for a budget adjustment to maintain our urban forests, even with the money we're spending on the removal and planting of these trees.
Great.
Thank you.
You buried the lead on that one, Joe.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other informational reports, Steve? Okay. NVTA, Vice Mayor, do you want to report out on those back-to-back meetings?
Yes, thank you. The board met on September 18th, and we had a number of our regular items. One thing that is new that came before us was a new, a draft for a new code of conduct on our public transportation, so that riders can know what to expect in the way of what is and is not acceptable behavior. That'll be coming back for additional review later. And then we recessed to the Transportation Summit, which was held at CIA Copia, and I didn't get a head count. I know there were well more than 100 people there. We had a really robust question-and-answer session. All of the board was there, and we all took questions from the audience. The shuttle, shuttle service, biking, bike routes, express routes, new routes for buses. And there were some really interesting questions on just how to drive, no pun intended, increased public transportation. And I will say that Mayor Canning of Calistoga gave what might have been the most succinct answer, which was do like Europe does and make gas $10 a liter. So I don't think that's going to work here, but it was an idea put forth. But it was all to drive, NVTA is doing our forward look to what we see transportation being in the next 10, 20, 30 years. And so there were a lot of interactive booths and tables to gather ideas from the public for what they want to see, and to try to just get some synergy on getting us forward, driverless cars, everything that could be put on the table. Our next regular meeting will be October 23rd. That is a week later than usual, because a lot of us will be out of town on the regular meeting date. So for those of you who watch or attend, October 23rd.
And I'll recognize that our own Public Works Director was down there, representing part of what we have done in Yountville with alternative modes of transportation and part of the whole roads and infrastructure presentation to the attendees. So thank you, Joe, for being there. Watershed Information and Conservation Council?
Yes. So we met last Thursday, and we had an update on water. Well, first of all, the water in the creeks after the fires and what had happened with the sediment loads after the fires, and they did, talked about the monitoring and sampling. There were several locations, including St. Helena Creek, Lake Berriessa, Buddha Creek, and Cold Canyon Creek, which was, turned out to be, had the most significant damage. But they said overall, the creeks and rivers did not sustain significant damage from the fires. They also talked about groundwater monitoring. The submittal to the state has been delayed because of, actually, compliance in the southern part of the state has been slow, and so they've extended the deadline for compliance with that to January 2020. And, let's see, there is going to be, on October the 9th, there's a Napa Wild presentation at the library, and Tasha Commandant from the Pepperwood Preserve will speak about what do we do if climate change disrupts the availability of water from the state. So that should be interesting. And it's all, it was there. There was so much more than that, but it was, I boiled it down to just a few minutes.
Those were the highlights.
Those were the highlights.
Thank you for that report. League of California Cities update. Several of us attended the North Bay Division meeting on September 23rd at the Sonoma Raceway. They gave us shuttle tours of the facility, which is several hundred acres in total. And then we heard a presentation about the status of Highway 37 and that corridor between Sonoma and Napa Counties, as it travels through Napa County. And there were several, again, long-term vision concepts that were shared about solutions to flooding and congestion issues along that corridor. And I believe all of us are headed down in a couple of weeks to Long Beach for the League's annual conference, where Councilmember Dornbecker will be sworn in as the new North Bay Division President. I will be there to swear you in.
Thank you.
Not at you, but swear you in.
I know, you change.
Steve, I believe you're becoming the first Vice President of the City Managers Department. And just to round out the taking over of the statewide organization by Yountville, I'll be sworn in as the new League President. So I know, I can speak, I'm sure, for all of us, that we have found the League to be very educational and supportive of our efforts locally, and so looking forward to continuing that effort. Any other comments about League or anything else? Councilmember Muller?
A couple of things. I just wanted to remind everybody that next Wednesday, December 9th, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, flu shots, Community Center, 11 to 1.
October 9th.
October 9th. Boy, I'm rushing in here.
Yeah.
Wrote down December.
Ready for holidays.
October 9th, okay, almost got it right, except for the month. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to bring up, Upper Valley Waste Management, I've mentioned it a couple of times, we've got an excess, almost $500,000 in our budget because of the, all of the waste that came in from the fires in Santa Rosa. And so we've talked about it a couple of times, and what our plan, board plan is to distribute the funds is that, and it's kind of loose, we're not real formal on that garbage board. But anyway, so if somebody, a town, municipality, or the county applies for some of the funds, you need to show an excess, because these are ratepayer funds to trash. I have an understanding from Steve Letter, our executive officer, that street sweeping, if the town may choose, or whatever, there doesn't seem to be a limit at the moment. So I would, and he says all you have to do is send him a paragraph and an email. So we're pretty flexible, so I would suggest Yountville should be first, and come up with something to spend some of that money. So that's all.
Thank you. I did want to remind folks in this part of our meeting that Councilmember Dornbecker and I did attend the first regional, or I should say county, Climate Action Committee meeting, really basically to set kind of a scope of work, and we tried to set future meeting dates, which of course didn't work out. So we're going to, that'll be our next meeting, is to figure out when we're going to meet next. I did want to recognize Yountville Days coming up this Saturday, starting at 11 o'clock with our parade, and it will go until 4 o'clock with chili cook-off and other great activities, live music, as always, perfect weather, as always. So we're looking forward to that. On Saturday, a reminder, Saturday, not Sunday. Also wanted to recognize that it may still be going on right now. The Napa Unified School District 711 Committee was going to be meeting again tonight, moving that process forward, reviewing the status of Yountville Elementary School and Mount George Elementary School, and the looming closures of those two schools. I know the Vice Mayor has been an alternate at that committee. Any additional thoughts on that?
Under consideration on the agenda this evening is to consolidate. They voted to, the committee voted to close at the last meeting, and then there was a subsequent discussion of consolidation. So I believe that the outcome from the committee, based on last meeting, was that they will recommend consolidating Yountville Elementary School with Willow. And that means they will move, if the students and parents want to, they will move our school en masse in a group to Willow. And there was, there will also be discussion this evening of open enrollment and some priorities given for displaced students and siblings.
And the other, I believe, Mount George would similarly be consolidated to Alta Heights.
Alta Heights, yes.
Yes. And again, a reminder that on October 24th, that's when the district's Board of Trustees will be meeting, and that's when the formal recommendation will be acted upon. So anyone that is continuing to try to make a best effort to save Yountville Elementary School, I, in my opinion, should direct those comments to the Board of Trustees. They are going to be the ultimate decision-makers on that. The school district staff has made their recommendation for closures slash consolidations. So that's been their position. Other reports and announcements? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I did, last Friday, I believe it was, I attended a workshop, co-sponsored by Catholic Charities and Coad, which is community organizations active in disaster, and I went as a representative of our Emergency Preparedness Ad-Hoc Committee. Councilmember Dornbecker had another engagement. It was very interesting. The, the theme was, they've received a grant, and the grant is to find out how to really motivate people to prepare and to get people prepared. There was a lot of discussion, the same that we have here in Yountville, of neighbor helping neighbor is the very first line of what we want to foster, and that, that, I don't know a good word, the word used at the meeting was inertia, that we are all grappling with. Everyone wants to do it, but how do we, as jurisdictions and as nonprofit organizations, assist them in doing that? And they will be doing follow-up interviews with all of us individually, so we will report more on that. And the last thing I wanted to report was, I know there was some public comments this evening earlier about rent stabilization. There were meetings over the weekend in both Bella Vista and Rancho de Napa. There is, I think it's a nonprofit, it's called the Vallejo Mobile Home Coalition, and I think their board president is Terry Pullman. And Ms. Pullman came, I went to the one for Rancho, Ms. Pullman came and spoke for about 30 minutes and took Q and A for about 30 minutes. So I'm just letting the council know that, as we heard from people tonight, those meetings have taken place.
Thank you. I also just wanted to mention that the Vice Mayor and I, as the members of the Cannabis Now Standing Committee, will be meeting with staff prior to our next council meeting. So we will likely have a status update on the discussions about cannabis, potential cannabis retail. The Board of Supervisors did take a vote to continue its prohibition of commercial cultivation in the unincorporated county. So that is a topic that is on a lot of agendas these days. Yes, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I have one, one final thing, and that is that I would like everyone to put on their, mark on their calendars, Tuesday, October 29th, when the Ad-Hoc Committee for Disaster Preparedness will present a workshop at the Community Center, and we invite you to come. We will have tables, tabling with interesting, like ham radios, and what to put in your go-bag and things like that, and then a few surprises along the way. And we have a plan how to get people interested in actually doing the neighbor-to-neighbor in their neighborhoods. So come out and join us for that.
Thank you. We do have a closed session, as listed, initiation of litigation under the government code. Do we expect any reportable action?
We do not.
Okay. With that, once we get out of our closed session, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, November 5th at 6:00 PM. So we will now go into closed session. Thank you very much.